Financial information in front of you, not a lot to talk about this week. We've got one travel encumbrance for DES and in the vouchers we have two payments. The first one is for $33,431.50 to Junction Auto for a 2016 GMC CR2-2500 pickup for Water Resources and a payment of $99,161.74 to Precise Flooring of Ohio for work on a forest name across the loop. Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an Q resolution 16 dash 077 identifying the financials for the date of June 21st, 2016.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
I'd love to leave you on top of your financials.
Commissioner's office will report as approved June 20th, 2016 by the county commissioner authorized by resolution 16 dash 005 under the direction and supervision of the county commissioners that was approved January 11th, 2016 pursuant to ORC 305.30.
And this was simply concurring with Charon Township trustees and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by Cedar Gem LLC DBA St. Dennis Golf Club and Party Center. It's just a transfer of an existing license.
Then we have the veterans who speak coming up.
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning. We're here to, I guess, allocate the budget somewhat. We represent the Veteran Service Commission. Members of board, you know that. Two of you have spoken at our monument and it's a monument and it is, it's in disrepair somewhat. It's going down and we had, before Memorial Day, we had about five or six calls from people indicating that they were unhappy with the disrepair and why weren't we fixing it. And we looked at it and we kind of figured, we had a lease that expired in 2014, I think, and the burden went on you guys to fix. And then, I don't know, the money wasn't there or what, but I think if we, you allocate to us the responsibility to fix it, we can fix it appropriately. I mean, we can get all the flags, get the lights going, get the bricks on the lights up to snuff and get the weeds out of the area.
Do we have Glenn come up?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that.
Sure.
Glenn, you want to come up and speak to some of the repair issues? So the, and thank you for, by the way, inviting me to speak on the Memorial Day.
Wish I was there.
It was a joy and a pleasure to be able to speak there. And the memorial is actually pretty inspiring. Look at all the history that's there and all that kind of stuff.
You invited him to speak on Memorial Day and I got November 11th?
Thank you for that.
I'm there in the snowstorm.
It was greatly appreciated. There was a lot of folks there and inspiring Memorial and it is, it is kind of a neat place to go to. So I'd like to hear more about what your concerns are relative to the repairs. While I was there, I noticed that plaques were being tarnished and it looked like the grass had been cut and like things have been cleaned up. I'm, you know, the county owns the property, so I'm certainly concerned about the fact that we're taking care of that property particularly because the veterans of Memorial and so forth. So can you tell me more about what it is that your concerns are and what?
Well, I think the county's done well.
No, go ahead.
The county's done well, but they're cut by their budget, I think. They gave us a quote, I think, last September or something.
Yes.
About $3,400 to repair the bricks around the lights and stuff like that. And it's my understanding that the county commissioners aren't really authorized to use things to eliminate the weeds.
You mean can't use Roundup, is that what you're trying to say?
Right.
Okay. I don't know whether that's true or not. I mean, I defer to Glenn on some of this stuff, so.
With the Roundup and we can bring somebody in, it's all the paperwork and the state regulations, we can't just go in and lay it down. We go in at least three, four times a year with a weed eater and spraying. And if I'm correct, we did spray last year once for weeds. Out there, we had a contract come in and sprayed all these, just, we did take complaints on some of the trees we've gotten in there. We've got all the trees trimmed back, all the dead branches trimmed back and everything. So that's where we're at. I've heard grass clippings since we've taken requests on that. We've talked to contractors below all the signs and everything up there. So there are no grass clippings on the side, so.
There's lights, lighted, marked walls with plaques on them and those bricks around them have settled. If you were there, you probably noticed the lights take off some places, sending them some places. They're just, the bricks need to be repositioned and all.
They're just laying on gravel or some base?
Probably a limestone.
Yeah.
Crushed limestone base, but they just need to be repositioned. It's just maintenance. They should be level with the lights as it is now. The lights get hit by lawnmowers because they drive them over. People trip over them. It's just an unnecessary event that should be maintained. That shouldn't be, this isn't brain surgery. People went and fixed them and moved them up. It's just, this needs to be, that attention needs to be done. I personally would think that the grounds could have been a little better crafted for Memorial Day. I picked up almost five gallons of cigarette butts along the parking lot, pile of dirt on the walkway from when the snow was plowed, seven red snowplow markers that were not standing in the grass or one was leaning against a brick wall for the memorial. I don't mind doing that, but it's, I can't just, can't understand how this has to be an issue. It's just maintenance of what we have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little confused. I don't think we have any budget issues relative to the things you're talking about, getting stuff cleaned up.
No, no.
Certainly.
Other than you don't authorize in the budget to fix it, we had it, we'll fix it.
That's an internal issue. We just need to bring to your attention.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like it so that when it's presentable and, you know, it was built and we'd like it to be maintained.
I don't think we'd have any disagreement from the other two guys and they're certainly wanting to speak up. We want to make sure that the veterans are maintained. And I don't know that we're paired here to determine the exact approach and what that should be. We ought to figure it out. I mean, get together, if you guys want to take someone else, that's fine. We're going to, more with Glenn, I need to get Glenn's advice on this because I don't know the details on it. We certainly need to make sure that if you guys have issues, you raise those up. We have a mechanism for you to get those into the system, to get things taken care of and that's my perspective on it. And so, you know, I'd like to see this ensure that we improve taking care of that memorial and whatever that's going to take, so.
So with the quote that I have to do the brick work, because we did the lighting last year, all the lights worked on it and that was confirmed right before Memorial Day. With the bricks, do I, am I authorized to go ahead and repair it or the vets repair them?
Rather than make, shoot from the hip here, I think we need to sit down and take a look holistically of what the situation is. And is that going to take care of it, just the bricks as a light, the grass? Because it sounds like there's some ongoing kind of a maintenance thing. We need to get this on the, raise this up to the proper visibility so that we know that on an ongoing basis, you guys are coming back in six months and saying, hey, well, it's not getting taken care of. And so we've got some situations.
The level of acceptability in our eyes should be a little better. It is acceptable to the contract that Glenn lets. Maybe, you know, I don't know. He has a, somebody to cut grass and maybe that contractor doesn't have it. I don't have that knowledge. It's just that we'd like the level of maintenance to be possibly higher.
Well, why don't we set something up so we can sit down and actually look at the entire year's schedule, so to speak, what needs to get done, whether the temporary immediate situation like the bricks, for example, that's not an ongoing maintenance issue, that's a fix and take a look at what all this is. I mean, we just allocated the veterans considerable amount of change. I don't know how that comes to the play into this whole thing because you have some money that you could also use and again, I don't know how, what you're doing with all that, what your allocation funds are and so forth, or what you're doing with those allocation funds. So we can get that all on the table and work through this, where we make sure this is taken care of. Because I agree with you and I'm on the same page with you as well, to make sure that veterans are taken care of.
Question I have, shame on me for not knowing the answer. Sidewalks and so on, where you said there's snow markers or, you know, whatever. Do we clean those sidewalks during the dead of winter? Do we blow them off or anything?
Unless I get word that they're having a ceremony or something or something special, then we'll go up the river.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, generally speaking, the ground freezes and it heaves various things. If it's clean, if it's, if it's got a foot of snow on top, it's not as subject to the frost, even the bricks and so on. And I didn't know, I'm thinking, are we cleaning that? What are the markers up the, what are the markers on the sidewalk? Is snow?
These were along the edge of the parking lot and one was leaning against the monument. They're just, the public parking lot is.
Right, okay, so those came from a snow block.
When you walk up the walkways to the monument, there's just cigarette butts all over the place. I know we can't control that.
Do we have some there to put them in?
But we have to pick them up. And whether they have to put a container and they put a, they put them in.
Glenn, do you have a suggestion on what you'd like to see going forward? I mean, you and me or whoever can sit down and kind of get this all on the table so we can bring it back to the board if we need to make approvals for more funding, whatever. Sort that all out so we have it all a clear picture. So do you have a suggestion on this?
No, we can sit down and go forward with that if we need to go from there.
Did you guys, Michelle, do you want to meet with us or one of you guys want to meet with us? What would you like to do?
Yes, I'd be glad to meet with you.
One of the issues, I think I saw an email, there was a question about the handicap, accessibility of the walkways. What was the specific issue?
People in, with walkers, they tripped going up there because of the little pebbles and stuff like that.
The surface of the walkways?
Correct, the surface itself.
Okay. It's not a matter of slope or anything?
No, no, the grade was perfectly fine. It was just the pebbles and stuff.
We could just, Glenn and us get together and hash it with you.
Let's see what the regular routine maintenance issues are and making sure that it's taken care of. We need the grass cut and blow the grass off the memorial and we need to shine up the plaques. And I was really impressed, this was on the third, it was the first time I actually went to the memorial and spent time to drive by it all the time. And to look at the, going all the way back to Revolutionary War, all the names of all the people that are up there, I think it's actually pretty inspiring.
We don't have a problem that before, this year Glenn, they got up there and got the, we got in, stuffed the mulch around the plants and we've all, Glenn and us, come in on our weekend before Memorial and spruced it up, done the little touch up thing before those services. This year it was much better, but there's still some ongoing issues that need to be addressed. Maybe, you know, I'm sure we can work that.
Thanks for raising it up to our attention and I'll have David jump and just get to something.
Did you do this every year? I mean, in the past or is this damage that, this unevenness in the bricks and something, does that happen in the last 12 months or was it addressed?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing.
The nature of the bricks, they're going to show.
Because last year, last September, Glenn had approached me and asked for us to pay the $3,400 to fix it. It wasn't in our budget because we assumed that it was the lease agreement between the Memorial Incorporated and the county commissioners that that would fell on you. We have no problem, no problem whatsoever paying for that to be fixed. We just want to know, is it our responsibility to pay for it? And we would be more than happy to. So that it wouldn't be his problem to maintain that every year or keep it up to our standard.
It's all coming out of the same general fund.
Exactly. But we just want to know from you, is it ours or is it theirs?
Let's sit down and figure it out because we don't need to make, turn this into some big complicated thing.
Correct.
And let's just sit down and talk about it and identify what it is that everybody agrees is needed to be done. Let's do it.
I'm just thinking here at the table real quick, it might be a situation of who sees it? You know, Glenn takes care of a lot of buildings and maintenance takes care of a lot of buildings for the county and a leaky roof on this building or the courthouse or something like that may get a higher priority than uneven bricks at that point in time, not forever. And it might be something where you folks who see the monument more frequently, I mean, I was there when I spoke two years ago or whatever in November. I haven't stopped there and walked up since that time, so what I'm trying to say is, shame on me, but I don't go there as frequently as I could and the employees who have these other problems. So maybe it's, we need you folks to point it out more frequently or figure out how to authorize you guys to fix it.
Yeah, I mean, that may be ultimately, I think, and that's kind of what they've asked, they say, hey, they're focused on that, we put it in their budget.
Exactly.
Because this guy's got an awful lot on his plate all the time.
Well, I like with the papers, I like to go ahead and move forward with this and not get these papers fixed. It's $3,400 and I'd like to walk out of here and get this done and sign it.
Some of the trips.
Well, that's our main concern.
They sue you or us? Both. Just kind of curious on how that works and don't lean back in the chair.
Your life will pass in front of your eyes. I would say we're going to get this done. I don't know that we have the mechanism in place for us. We don't have anything signed today to give you that authorization.
It's only $3,000. It's a service contract that I have already in place.
Can we just pass those?
You don't even have to do that. You just, you guys say go forward, you'll do it.
From my perspective, I'd say go forward.
Absolutely.
And maybe the budget here, we talk about, you know, a formalized budget for maintenance and if everyone agrees with that, then we do it that way.
We would be more than happy to take care of it and take that responsibility.
And you've asked before and yeah, no, we.
But I don't want just to, you know, all of a sudden we've made this decision to take care of the $3,500 brick situation and now we've got other maintenance issues that are eyeing, zoning and languishing. We need to get this on the table once and for all and say, okay, we got a mechanism in place. We can just schedule it with you guys, outsource it or have Glenn do it. And then we don't need to, then we look in periodically, make sure we're doing our job.
Correct.
And so, you know, so we're not having to go over this again. Anything more we need to say?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
You guys want to find something inspiring, go out and type in flash mob 2014 on the internet. Michelle?
I'm sorry?
You said you want to see something inspiring, go out and type in 2014 flash mob.
Okay.
And you'll see the Air Force flash mob.
Okay.
It is, it is very cool. Linda?
From the larger to the smaller, as you may recall, we did a pretty serious overhaul of our probation policy a few months ago. And at the time, to facilitate the change from how we used to do things to how we do now, we gave the employees the choice whether they wanted to stay under the old regime or to come up with a new one. And we have four people left who chose to stay under the old, which means that when they come to the end of their probation, they will, their salary will be adjusted. And what happened was the four people who had left, the original motions for their promotions or hirings or whatever contained the prior salary rate. In the meantime, we had raises in March, so I'm asking you to amend those original motions to the new rate so that when they come to the end of their probation, they'll be at the current salary rate.
This is just a 2% adjustment?
Correct.
In the salary?
Yes, it was just a little bump to the salary. I have two this week and then two next week and then I won't have to do this ever anymore.
Okay.
So.
Maintenance Department, I didn't see, oh, I see, okay. Yeah, you can have those two.
The Archives and Record Center is requesting the board amend the motion from December 29, 2015 to correct the post probationary salary rate for Eleanor Bunn, Micrographic Specialist Number 2605, from $16.69 per hour to $17.00 per hour to be effective at the end of probation on July 3rd, 2016. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board amend the motion from December 29, 2015 to correct the post probationary salary rate for Rick Behan, Ground Supervisor Number 1913, from $18.97 per hour to $19.35 per hour to be effective at the end of probation on July 3rd, 2016.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
This one is a hiring, Nathan Mumm to replace Corey, that quit a couple of weeks ago. He's been working at Henderson State Parks. He's also worked at GAR Highway. He's got college, with home sports, medical, so I think he'll be really good, especially with working at Henderson State.
Where's your phone?
Newberry.
Newberry, okay.
You've got to watch some Newberry folks. So I think he's going to be really great for the department.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve hiring Nate Eugene on to be positioned as full-time maintenance worker number 1904 to be effective July 11th, 2016 at the rate of $13.57 per hour with a one-year probation period.
I'll make that motion second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Morning, Dale.
And how often are we going to have to talk about the dangerous animals?
Yeah, much to my surprise, we received an application dated, what, April 10th or something? We just got it like two weeks ago. So it shows, it gives you a whole committee now, gives you Catherine McDermott, the dangerous wild animal owner and Jason Cretsch, who is a veterinary technician, so that completes the whole.
Staff.
Yeah, which will meet for half an hour.
Once every five years or give you a ratio? This is a public meeting because I want to come watch this.
Yes, yeah, we'll make sure the press gets 24 hours notice on this one.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board amend the motion from May 24, 2016 to read a brief point and execute the application for a dangerous wild animal response team, board according to ORC 935.28, to further approve and execute the initial Dangerous Wild Animal Response Team nomination form authorized in the director's following list of individuals to the state of Ohio Dangerous Wild Animal Emergency Response Commission, DWAERC, to serve a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2019. Law enforcement, Dan McCollum, Sheriff, First Fire, First Aid, Scott Hill, the brand hand to Friday Department, Emergency and衧业部, Department of Emergency Services. Health, Bob Westec, Health District, Broadcast, Print Media, John Karlick, Maple Leaf, Collected Local Official, Lori Dunza, Dangerous Wild Animal Owner, Catherine McDermott, and Ben Mary, Jason Cretsch.
I'll make the motion, second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
This whole, this whole team has everything to do with only a term domesticated dangerous animals versus alligators or lion, mountain lions that come and snatch kids out of their yards.
One's a bobcat, one's a Canadian fox and I don't think they're domesticated.
But they're in captivity.
Yes, they're in captivity.
What I'm saying is that this doesn't deal with our coyote situation. Just when people own a dangerous animal, however limited that is. We're not talking about both districts, you're not in the list of dangerous animals. Which one did we eliminate, Jerry?
Number 10 is a 4.2. There was, we were going back through, a couple of number discrepancies in the total and USDA won't sign off. It was only like four cents, but USDA is not going to sign off on it if there's a change on it, even for four cents. It was a whole number that they pulled off of, probably a change order. The first item here is contract with LGB Incorporated to do the engineering services for Sewer Trunk Main Relocation Project. This is the project where we have the sewer trunk maintenance put in back in the 70s. Back then, they didn't think about erosion or whatever the reason was and they crossed the stream, the stream that ran down through the valley behind Canyon Lakes four or five times. There's two areas where it's coming out and starting to, the bottom of the river has started to erode, so the pipe is starting to be exposed, so we need to get it relocated. And then we have the same thing on our Hoxmore, which is covered by this also, where the sewer line is showing, starting to be eroded in the bottom of the river. So the Hoxmore one, the Canyon Lakes, the trunk main, we're going to be able to do a gravity line, gravity line on the south side of the stream to eliminate those. Hoxmore unfortunately is a flat gravity sewer. We have to actually install a pump station and be able to pump underneath the river at that point, so. And the engineering contract includes not only the design, but for, on the civil side, but also the geotechnical work, the survey work and the electrical work on the pump station design.
Jenny, so let me ask you, Jerry, I've, I've been struggling with this since I started here. Like, why can't we, this is one project that we're paying $115,000 for and there'll be more coming up, you know, and there's been a whole lot of these that have been done. Why can't we hire this in-house to be able, to afford somebody that we can have 24/7 to be able to do something like this? You know, to have an engineering team. I, I mean, is it, is it, are we restricted by legalities that we can't, that we can't?
It's not so much legalities as just, but when we're doing, if this was just the trunk main project, I would look at maybe doing it inside internally with a gravity sewer. But when you start, but even then, I would still be coming to you with at least two contracts, one for geotechnical work and one for survey work. On the pump station side, I'd be coming, dealing with a contract with an engineer to do the electrical design. We don't have, we'd have to hire, if we wanted to do that and do it according to the rules.
What percentage of this cost do you think would be the electrical and the survey work? Like that 115?
I'd have to look at, look at the initial contract, but I think, I don't know whether it's broken out in the contract or not. If I had to throw out, it's probably, between the geotechnical and the electrical and the survey, it's probably about 25%.
Percent?
Yeah.
Because, you know, and I guess I just look at it as, you take 25%, let's, let's give you that. I mean, we would still be in a situation where we would have eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars towards a salary of one person to be able to, you know, it's done with this. And I'm just, I, I'm, I'm not questioning what you're doing. I don't take that at all that way.
It's something I've thought about too, is, you know, does it, does it make sense for us?
It's just, I mean, we're, we're, I think that, you know, and if I, if, if all of our water plants were in conditions that were like, you know, we're smooth sailing for the next twenty years, I'd say, Jerry, we gotta just suck this up and, and pay it. But we've got headaches of headaches coming up, you know, coming down the road. This isn't, this isn't something, I mean, we fixed this mess, now we're gonna go and fix another one. And, and I just think that it's getting to the point where, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're looking at these professional fees that we're paying, that it's like, what can we do to truly bring this in-house that could be that much more effective, not only with water resources, but if there's other projects that, that are happening within our own county that we need some assistance with? I just think that, you know, and I'm not trying to take the private enterprise out of this mix at all. I'm just saying that at the end of the day, we're looking to really run in government like a business to make sense. I would never run my business like this. I would look for it in-house to say, we've got this accessible to us to be able to do this. And I, I just, I think that we really gotta, you know, and obviously, we're not gonna make a decision today to, to, to do this or not to do this, but I really think that we maybe need to look at a job description of, of what we can, what we can look at for you to be able to bring somebody on board or a team of people on board, that, you know, if we did truly a study to see how much have we paid for engineering services over the last thirty-six months, we probably would have had a guy salary for the next twenty years here. And, and I, I just, I, I.
No, it's good, that's a good point. And it's, it is something I've thought about, and I actually thought about it on both sides, both the engineering side and the construction side. At least on some of the construction numbers we've been seeing recently, does it make sense for our department to have a more of a, you know, a construction entity within it to do some of these?
Didn't there used to be a bigger engineering staff at one time?
Yeah, at one time, we did have, there, there was the director, and then there was a sanitary engineer, assistant sanitary engineer, a design engineer, and three engineering technician, or two engineering technicians and two additional inspectors. You know, it was, it was kinda one of those things where, as the, that we, you know, the idea of making the department a little smaller on the salary side, obviously, that's, you know, I have to look at what we would need in, in place. I don't, I can't say it's gonna be one person that would solve this, you know, be able to do this. Maybe, maybe a team of two or three, not necessarily all engineers.
Right.
You need, you know, cat drafters and things, and that. Isn't that the standard make versus buy argument? I mean, I, I would be a hundred percent on, in Ralph's side of the camp if we had an ongoing use or need for a specific skill set. Oftentimes, these projects require a unique skill set. So while we're doing engineering on this one, it might require a specific, unique engineering type, where the next project requires a different kind of engineer. And I don't know that, I mean, you have to answer the question, but if it makes sense, because we're doing so much of this kind of work, and it's the same skill set, and, and it's cheaper to hire them, keeping in mind that this is an ongoing permanent expense now.
Right.
You know, when you go out and you hire these guys on a contract basis, you hire them, you pay a little bit more, but then you don't have to carry that load for the next twenty years, or however long you gotta carry your employee. But that's a standard make versus buy calculation, and that's math. And so if you look like. And that's something, like I said, that's something I've been looking into, is just kinda thinking and realizing what our department's gonna be going through in the next ten to fifteen years, twenty years, with the, you know, the age of our plants and the age of the sewer systems, and does it make sense for us to have that? Rather than, like I said, rather than spending this, you know, a hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand there.
My question is a different, Jerry. When this was put in, these trunk lines function, they still function, right? They're just becoming exposed.
Right.
And they're becoming exposed because of erosion, which is a failure in the EPA or whoever. And then they come back and say, oh, you gotta relocate this and put it deeper or whatever. And then in fifteen years, we have erosion, and the line is exposed again.
That's, that's why we're, what we're planning on doing is taking it completely out of the river. But really, in my opinion, the way it should've been done in the first place, it should've just been brought down on one side of the river.
Brought down on one side.
Instead of crossing.
Correct your score.
The river, you know, meanders down in that area, so they just went, back then, they just said, shortest distance between two points is a straight line, and back then, there weren't all the requirements for any, you know, doing, if you work in the river, they just dug the river and put it in with concrete on top of the pipe.
My question was, could it be encapsulated? In other words, you don't want that, that pipe out there, and you can't have the river go under the pipe because the tree's gonna get snagged in there when, when it falls off the bank and it's washing down in a flash flood. But why can't they bring that area, encapsulate it with concrete or something, up to the original elevation of the, of the river? And it'll, it'll fill in with silt on the, on the upwater side of that. And it's out of the, you know, no harm, no foul, it's buried in there.
That is, when, when they put that line in, they did, they did use concrete on top, but they, the only concrete is basically from the midpoint of the pipe to the top, they didn't.
No, it has to be.
They didn't cover the whole pipe. The, my concern with trying to do what you're saying is, now you're bringing in not only the EPA, which would approve a realignment of the sewer, that's gonna be kind of, EPA never rubber stamps anything. It's gonna more or less be a rubber stamp of saying, okay, we're not, you know, there's no, there's no effect, we're taking away a possible bad effect by getting it out of the river. But you also have the Army Corps and O D N R and a bunch of other entities you're now gonna have to deal with, with that pipe in the river and doing work in the riverbed. My preference would be, get it out of the riverbed, and then we don't have to worry about further erosion at a later date. Because eventually, it probably, you know, you'd have, similar to what you're seeing now, it broke down, and then it's gonna keep eroding on the upstream side of the, of the concrete that you did there, until it gets underneath. And then you have the stream running underneath the concrete, and this pipe, which was a concrete pipe, and doesn't have any true, you know, structural support at that point.
Well, wrapping up a good point, and certainly worth, a question worth asking, and it's an ongoing, I mean, I, I question it often, I have to play. Same thing, you contract with a lot of companies.
Right.
At some point in time, you contract so much, the cost is so high, it's just better to bring somebody in. And so, but we leave that to you to determine what the rate, 'cause you know the types of people that you need in order to do all these projects, and if there's some continuity between all the projects you're doing, it just makes sense. In fact, to look at it and say, okay, maybe we oughta just, like, well, hire somebody, and, 'cause that's the smart thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I've been looking at this, the one that, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to necessarily bring in surveyors and, and, you know, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, 'cause those are smaller parts of the bigger project. But maybe to have a, you know, another civil engineer on staff and a drafter who can do, can draft the plans.
Dave, do you know if it's proper for us to contract with our own county engineer who has surveyors? So if you're doing surveying, we have surveyors who work for the county.
Right.
And so I don't know if it's proper, when you need a surveyor, to go out and get one of Joe's guys.
Yeah, I mean, we probably create some sort of memorandum of understanding where they'd be compensated, because, you know, they, they're paid out of a fund that's meant for roads. So in order to do that, we have to come up with a document that would demonstrate that we weren't using taxpayer dollars meant for roads to do other things.
Right.
To be a person, but I think, like, we're done.
So I don't know if that makes sense, but he has engineers over there too.
It also assumes that those people are, have extra time, and that they're not, or that we're overstaffed with them. So they'd have time to do this, that's an assumption that I'm not prepared to make, maybe.
And that's, yeah, and that's an option, and maybe, maybe it is a point where we hire the surveyor, and then as the engineer needs more help, works in reverse.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I just don't, you know, I don't know what goes on over there, man-wise. But to say, well, they have somebody, we could just use them, is premature until we find out from them whether they have excess time, that they're not.
Yeah, and it's certainly.
Doing roads and ditches and bridges and culverts and.
Talk to Joe or Nick or Shane, Shane and see what, whether that would.
Well, there's no assumption made there, but it's certainly worth the question.
Right, yeah.
We got a lot of employees across the county, we have to be leveraging them and keeping them busy to the extent that we can. And I know Joe keeps them busy.
I was gonna say, I don't see anybody standing around.
He goes to his operation, he's not letting anybody sit there and like grass going through. But I wish they had O-Dot was that way down on three twenty-two. I've been checking on them every day this last week, and I, I gotta say, their hourly rate is fantastic, what they're doing, so. I don't have good things to say about that. Anyway, so any more questions on this?
Do you have any questions on it?
Good point.
Are you okay to move forward with this then?
Yeah, I mean, we, obviously, we need to get it done, but it's just, you know, I, I looked at what the engineering cost on that Russell Park was, and I looked at this, and we're a quarter million dollars, you know? I mean, and two projects. It just, it just, it pains me because it's like, this is just, you know, and I'm not taking away from what these professional people are doing, but it, it gets to a point where you gotta draw a line in the sand somewhere, and, 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 you know, sometimes people price themselves totally out of business. That's the reality of things.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I've been thinking about looking at this, 'cause it seems like all these, you know, these prices are going up a little faster than I would expect them to go.
Well, they are.
It's a smart question, between projects, so.
And, and unfortunately, you know, it's, 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 you know, the, nobody wants to sometimes ask the hard question, or nobody wants to be the bad guy of being able to point stuff out like this. But the reality is, is that, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's great to be the king, and, and, and you can charge whatever you wanna charge. And I understand this is specialized, but there's, you also get to a point where you're going to finally charge yourself out of, out of a job.
Well, and one of the things we've been seeing, I've been seeing, is that a lot of the smaller engineering firms who would've done, who we would've gone to do this because it's a smaller project, have been bought out by the bigger ones.
Right.
With the, the recent downturn in the economy, those smaller firms weren't able to necessarily make it, so they sold out.
And I guarantee you, those smaller firms, there's people there with expertise and knowledge and certifications that would more than like, more than be willing to fill positions in the county, that we would be able to have this done in-house. And I think that the taxpayers would want us to do our job like this, you know, be smart.
Yep. No, and I, and I agree, and that's one of the, one of the things, I'm kinda working on a lot of things.
Yeah.
Re-looking at the way things are going in the department, and what we have coming up, 'cause, you know, I jokingly say it, but when I took this position, I took it reluctantly, because I saw what the, what the future was with the department, with the age of the, age of our systems, so.
And that's why it's like, this is a constant, this is, this, I mean, you talk money pit, this is money pit here. We, we're just gonna continue to throw money, you know, into this, into what we've got because of just the retirement age of these plants, and we have to maintain them. And I just think that we really gotta, before, before we, you know, bleed out, we need to put this Band-Aid on and, and figure out, I'm speaking for myself, is I wouldn't delay to figure out a plan to move forward, to try to see what we yet need to do to try to, to try to at least have, have an option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, in, in contrast, I was sitting at, at the Whacka Water Ball in New York last week, and the head of the sewer district was there, and he was talking about the rate increase in Cleveland as a result of their lack of asking that kind of question and doing the right thing. Oh my God, the people of Cleveland have gotta be flooding out of that city. It was like an eighteen percent increase or some ungodly increase. And, and it's just because they've got all those aging systems, EPA's making Band-Aids and so on, so we're like, so fortunate for those, so. All right.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the initially agreement between the Jug County Board officials and L G B Incorporated for engineering services to Jug County for the relocation of the county sewer trunk main in Canyon Lakes area of Bainbridge Township in the amount of a hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll make them motion second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller? Aye.
Aye. So you think you're gonna look at that?
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I have, I have been, it's been one of the things I've been kinda going back and forth. With that, like I said, that and the construction side, it doesn't make sense for us to be doing some more of this construction in terms of, than spending three hundred thousand dollars on the book and bank of the ground. The, the next three items here are promotions for three of our gentlemen, who, two of them obtained their, the, the next licenses up. Jason Simpson obtained his water operator two license, Matt Hunter obtained his water operator one, and then Gail, Gail Knight came to us as a maintenance worker, but he had a C D L and a registered month's time. Before he came, we just couldn't promote him until he was done with the promotion and up into the maintenance technician position.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the promotion of Jason Simpson to the position of water operator two, number twenty-three thirteen, to be effective June nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of twenty-one dollars fifty-eight cents per hour, with a one-hundred-and-a-day probationary period. Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the promotion of Matt Hunter to the position of wastewater operator one, twenty-three twenty-six, to be effective June nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of nineteen dollars ninety-three cents per hour, with a one-hundred-and-a-day probationary period. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the promotion of Gail Knight to the position of maintenance technician, number twenty-three twenty-eight, to be effective June nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of eighteen dollars thirty-three cents per hour, with a one-hundred-and-a-day probationary period.
I'll make those motion second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
The next item is, we still have a open operator one position with Joe Punyak leaving. Matt is taking over Brian Benson's position, who went to replace Cal in the water section, when Cal left. So we still have the operator one open position, and then with the promotion of Matt Hunter from maintenance to operator one, we now have the maintenance technician, so we're gonna have to ask the advertiser to move to those positions. The operator one will be advertised internally for ten days, and then the maintenance, the maintenance worker will go out immediately.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of full-time plant operator one, number twenty-three twenty-six, at the Merritt Road Garage, in accordance with the union contract for a period of ten days. In the event no qualified candidates are found, the position will be advertised externally until the position is filled. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of maintenance worker number two-three-three-zero at the Merritt Road Garage. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make those motion second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now. Have a good day.
Yeah, sixteen seventeen are the beginning paperwork for the refinancing of the notes. Last year, three point three million in notes were issued, eight hundred thousand was for building projects, leveraging money that was advanced to the county engineer for his salt storage building and his divisional office, and five hundred thousand was to pay down, you know, a portion of the eight hundred megahertz radio system. So what is being recommended here is that we pay down one point three million dollars, so we'll need to refinance two million dollars, and that'll be for now just the communication system. So we look to, if we keep on this track of paying on five hundred thousand dollars a year, we're looking for more payments if the radio system's paying off.
And in reality, part of the long-term debt is zero.
Well, other than that, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, there's no long-term, there's no bonds or anything like that for the county general fund. There, there's debt that Water Resources has long-term for sewer projects, and as far as the general fund, there's two million dollars we issue, which is all the general fund has to, we're paying. That helps us have a really good bond rating, so that down the line, if we start looking at strategic plans for office facilities or whatnot, we're in a very good position to be able to do financing to cover any projects that might come up that would make sense and have good internal financial.
And just one more thing to add to this, I've got to go have a meeting across the street here in Quarter Tills, so I'm a little bit late. But, you know, with this, with this radio system, you know, one of the things that, that I think that we, you know, and I'm not trying to add to, to county payroll by no means, I, and, you know, as far as with Jerry, that's going to save us money. But, you know, this is a perfect situation here too, that there's a lot of projects that we can just physically do, make the right decisions on to buy things when we buy them, we don't overspend, we, we try to be as responsible as we can. But one of the things, like, with this radio system is that we need to maybe look at the potential, whether we contract with somebody or to, you know, to, to possibly look at. or to, you know, to, to possibly look at doing something in-house, that maybe we look to see what other opportunities are available out there as far as grants to receive on some of these projects. Now, I know that some of these projects, when they're, you know, pre-inception, they're, they come in with a grant for X number of dollars to do, you know, we're gonna pay you five hundred thousand dollars towards whatever. But I, the, the, the sad part about it is, is this, this radio system, when we go to pay this radio system, I guarantee you, there's a faster, better, um, you know.
Technology.
Um, piece of equipment that's gonna be out there
Mm-hmm.
that we're pretty much obsolete at this point. And, and I think that if we have the ability of looking at, you know, what is actually out there, you know, and, and even is there a grant out there that, that's going to give us the ability of doing an, an upgrade with a payoff of this, 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 this past debt to give us in a better position, whatever it may be. But I think that, that there's dollars available out there, you know? I mean, I look at, and, and, and it pains me, we have people hungry, and, and, and we're spending how many millions and millions of dollars for a, 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 a committee or a, you know, convention in Cleveland for security to, for what, you know? And, and we, we, we're, we're spending money, and, and cities are, are basically broke because they don't have the money to spend on services every day. Yet we're throwing millions of dollars into stuff like that. And I look at it like, okay, why can't we just at least pull two thou, two million dollars out of that that would pay this off? And look at what we could do with that money to better our services in the county altogether. So, I guess, it, it, what I'm saying is that I think that maybe it's something for us to look at. I know that I went to a presentation at the, at the airport a couple of weeks ago with, you know, independent, um, in, in, independent group that, that provides that service. And, and they don't, you don't pay until they play, you know, and they bring something to the table. But maybe we look at, at the option of what, what can we do, you know? And I don't know whose position that would be to try to research that out, to find, you know, how do we, how do we find that? Do we have anybody within our office that has a little bit of that understanding? Because I really don't, I'm not the expert, and I don't wanna come across to say I am. But I do know that there's a lot of stuff out there available, that can we find somebody that maybe could look for, for, for stuff like this to give us some assistance and expedite our pay down?
Well, yeah, I mean, specifically with communications, and that's changing all the time. So, we're halfway through paying off this four million dollar radio system. At the time, the decision was made to go with that, you know, one of the options was looked at as clearly be on the state mark system. At the time, the state wasn't accepting people. I think that's changed.
Okay.
So, you have that kind of change in technology too. And this is the appropriate time to start raising the question whether we should be talking to the sheriff, because everyone's a kind of minister of communications, and say, okay, you're looking down the line. What does the next generation look at? How's, how's it look? And should we start planning for the technology, or planning for innovative ways to pay for it? Or, or, you know, leverage our partnership with somebody else? So, when this becomes obsolete, we're not turning around and financing another four or five million dollars to replace it with, you know, the next radio system.
Wasn't this thing at eight million dollars to begin with, the eight hundred system?
No, it was, it was four. It was four basic, or it was between four and five, I think, I forget.
Yeah, I, I remember this conversation with the sheriff, and, and I'll comment a little bit on what Ralph was just talking about. And I'm in agreement for the most part. Um, but when she, when the, I was here on the temporary basis, when the sheriff, we were going through that whole budgetary process for that. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to keep this clear. Um, and, and the sheriff, my, my question was, are we investing in technology that we're gonna have to, that's gonna be obsolete in another four or five years? Why would we do this with the options? We talked with the mark system, but one of the comments he made about this specific technology is that it's supposed to have legs. In other words, it's a technology with a future. Uh, and so, yeah, you have to roll over the radios and stuff to kind of keep them up to speed. But generally speaking, the basic backbone infrastructure is.
Hey, can I ask Christie?
Um, it's gonna be solid into the future, hopefully guessed right, and so forth and so on.
At the commissioner's office?
But those, he's the expert on law enforcement radio systems.
But Dave knows he will be there as soon as he can.
I don't think there's anybody else in the county that's, that's an expert in that particular technology. He's got all the experts.
No, I'm in the neighborhood.
We have to count on our experts, as you've said before, uh, to help to guide us to some degree, not that we have to listen a hundred percent. The other part to that is, our department of development are experts in finding grants. So, if we find that our experts are telling us, we need, we'd like to get a way to pay for this, we can always go to our department of development, need a stalker and her team. They know all the mechanisms, the approaches, the, you know, who to go to and so on and so forth. They're the experts in getting grants. They meter that because you have to be really, really careful with the grant you take on the kind of strings that are attached to it, and what that's gonna do to you long-term. But, um, you know, I've always struggled with our county in terms of having a strategic plan for technologies, generally speaking. I'd love to see a strategic plan. I'd love to see the AEP board get smarter at developing a strategic plan on all of our technologies, because it's all constantly evolving and changing, and, and we have no plan for that stuff. And so, I'd love to see us come together and create some sort of a, bringing in our subject matter experts from law enforcement and whoever, and put all that on the table, because all of it's aging and changing constantly. And if there's ways to pay for it using dollars we've given away to the government, we can get it back. Fantastic. And Anita's the group to go talk to about that.
So, maybe with, so, so what you're saying is, is maybe we talk to her, re-reference this also?
Well, we can talk to the sheriff and find out what his, uh, what his thoughts are in terms of where this technology is at. Because he might say, this is gonna get us to the next twenty years. And I've done strategic plans, that's what I did for decades for large, large companies. And so, you, you get down all of that stuff on a list, and you age it. Because everybody, you, you know what the, the general lifespan of a particular technology is. Laptops are gonna last you three years or whatever that is. Server's gonna last you five years. You get that all down on a list, now you know, and you can start, you know, planning that aging process because you know you're gonna get hit by, um, you know, X amount of dollars in the future. And generally, you get more technology for the dollars. That's the way it works today. And so, you can actually, I mean, you can go buy an iPhone today for, well, not iPhones, because they're artificially keeping those prices up. But you can go buy a cellphone for, what, a hundred bucks or fifty bucks today? They give them away if you buy the service, where it used to be had to spend thousands of bucks to get it done, I think.
But I'm seeing as far as elimination of debt of this two million of potentially looking at products that are out there for us to be able to.
Oh, there's a grant available?
Right.
Yeah, Anita would be the one to go talk to about that.
Well, isn't, aren't these notes due? Don't we have to pay off the interest on this? Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have to vote on this because it's a bill.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna.
You know, I mean, it's, we can talk into the future, but the, the reality is, we gotta pay this off.
Oh, yeah, today we're gonna do this.
Right.
Well, Ralph was talking about it.
Well, he's late for a meeting and, and.
This is the first part of this.
Exactly, but I mean. Yeah, we have, it's a three point three million dollar note that we have to pay off. So, we have, we're paying one point three out of money we've put aside, but we need to refinance two, the two million of the three point three for another one-year note.
Right, well, let's talk about, um, we'll bring that back to the table for discussion, uh, which ought to be part of our work table discussion anyway. And, um, we can figure out where we can take that. But Anita and the sheriff and so forth, go ahead.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board acknowledge receipt of the fiscal officer certificate in regards to the two million dollars communication systems notes tiers two thousand sixteen. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve executive resolution number sixteen dash zero seven eight, providing for the issuance of notes of the county of Jogga in the aggregate principal amount of two million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying cost of acquiring and installing a colored safety communication system.
So. Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spillar?
Aye.
Mr. Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board cancel session on Thursday, June twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spillar?
Aye.
Mr. Spillar?
Um, for full disclosure, so that, so that you guys are aware of what's going on, I made a request to ODOT for, um, what we would receive as a county should we and Lake County choose to leave together in Wacka. Um, ODOT is right now doing that calculation, um, to determine what the administrative dollars are. We receive administrative dollars as well as project dollars, and so they, they promised that to me this week. And I've already talked to one of the county commissioners who are counting to see if there was any interest whatsoever in doing that, and it was soft interest, but something might be in control of that.
We'll plug it in.
So, uh, something is better than nothing, and I calculated a quick napkin kind of a number. It was like eighteen dollars that we can share with Lake County. We'll see. We go nowhere.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
On favor?